Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for July 12th, 2016. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Melvin Burns from Agape Christian Fellowship to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those who don't know, I used to be a city manager, and people ask me what I miss. And I don't miss anything except council meetings, employees, citizens, and council members. But with that in mind, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for watching over us and guiding our city. We pray, Father, that you would just grant this council the humility, God, to seek you in all situations. Father, grant them wisdom to not to seek knowledge beyond their own, and give them the courage and the boldness to act when you speak. We pray, Lord God, that you would just continue to watch over our community, our citizens, our police and fire, and public safety workers, God, and just keep us safe in light of everything that we see going on in the world. We know this is a time when everyone, we need you, we trust you, we rely on you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood, absent. Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, absent.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation by Sister Cities this evening?
See you.
Then we will move right along. Consent agenda, please.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary of requests to approve minutes of the June 28th, 2016 regular city commission meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Purchase of fourteen electronic poll books, City Clerk, summary request. The laptops that host the electronic poll book are approximately five years old and are showing their age. We would like to purchase new laptops for the fourteen precincts and use the existing laptops as backups in case of computer failure. These computers retail for $1,000 and offered through government purchasing for $700, but IT was able to negotiate a $600 per laptop price. Staff recommendation to approve the purchase of fourteen laptops from Dell through the government purchasing contract.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any one of these two items you wish to have removed for further discussion?
He said, "Which two item?" Would it be a public hearing item?
No, no, no.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Seeing none, I move...
I have one.
Oh, okay.
Item B.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Are there any other items? We could discuss the minutes. So, I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item B.
Bravo. It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasiviga, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to approve the consent agenda minus item B. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve the purchase of fourteen laptops from Dell through the government purchasing contract.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the purchase of fourteen laptops from Dell through the government purchasing contract, that's electronic poll books. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Finally catching my breath right here. Apologies for the delay. Just a question for you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Wondering, since when Lansing, the state's legislature and governor enacted the ban on straight ticket voting, they included a $5 million appropriation to help municipalities mitigating the effects of that ban to accommodate expected to be inconvenient voters and more voters, longer lines of voters. So, is any of that $5 million available for this purchase or any other purchases to help you with mitigating the effects of that legislation?
They have indicated that they are not going to be purchasing new laptops for any of the jurisdictions, that that's on us no matter what. And even though they had mentioned that they were going to help us with the longer lines in November, they have not given the funds for that. The funds are for new election equipment to be purchased after the November elections, so the state government is not providing us with any assistance.
Yeah, thank you. It is really disappointing for Lansing, given that they passed that ban on straight ticket voting despite two statewide ballots being approved by citizens for straight ticket voting. And in passing the ban, the new ban, they attached that appropriation, which then made it referendum proof. So, the citizens can't go to a statewide ballot again and say, "Hey, no, this is what we actually want. It's a convenience for us as voters."
Correct.
And so, they included that $5 million appropriation and yet are not dispersing any of it to help municipalities with mitigating the effects of that.
Not for the November election.
Yeah, that's most sad, especially given that it's the presidential election and a lot of down-ballot elections as well. So, I'm really disappointed to hear that, but I will approve this purchase to support you as city clerk.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. On my agenda, I had something missing. Is there anyone from the Veterans Memorial Park for a presentation here this evening? Okay, thank you. This brings us to public hearings. For the public hearings, each one of the issues will be presented by the clerk. The agency or individual that is making some of these requests will follow a staff report, and then members of the public are invited up to make comment or question on elements of the presentation. Each individual is given three minutes unless they're representing an organization or agency. And we ask that you keep your comments or questions specific to the presentation and the item. Then the public hearing is closed, and then after that, commissioners take their opportunity to comment and question at that time. And that's basically the format. So, with that being stated, may we have item A under public hearings, please?
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, Production Fabricators, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974, as amended, Production Fabricators Incorporated 1608 Creston Street has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The total capital investment will be $850,000 in personal property and will create five new jobs. This qualifies them for a tax abatement of 12 years under this current city policy. Staff recommendation, approval of the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for personal property.
Good evening, Mr. Franzick.
Good evening. So, this is an interesting project we've been working on for a while now. Production Fabricators is actually located in Muskegon Township. They would like to expand, but they ran out of property. So, they are located next to our city-owned property that we lease to Central Dispatch for our communications tower. So, we worked with them on some property that Central Dispatch was willing to give up the rights to since they were not utilizing it. So, we worked with them on a sale. The property was sold last year back in September, and we established the Industrial Development District in October. So, we're here tonight. He's ready to get started on the project, and they're going to be moving forward. We do have Mark Hoffman here from Production Fabricators, if you have any questions for him.
Very good. Are there any questions for staff while we have Mr. Franzick at the podium? Would anyone have any questions for our business owner? Commissioner?
Could just maybe explain, sorry, for the business owner?
Yeah.
I thought maybe if he could give a little presentation of what the plans were.
Sure.
Good evening.
We could just have your name.
Hope you mean little presentation.
I meant little, yes.
Mark Hoffman. Well, basically, we just ran out of space, and as Mike said, we're kind of landlocked. So, what looked like an easy project really became quite detailed. And I want to thank Mike, and Frank, and Mohammed, and Ed, and Kathy, and everybody for helping us out, because it was not a, it's not a simple thing to do. But hopefully, here in about 60 days by Labor Day, we'll have some employees where the insects and weeds stood for 50 years. So, that's the plan.
Very good.
Just one question. Exactly what does your company produce?
We are what you would call an OEM manufacturer. We make pieces, parts for all the other bigger companies in town, the Brunswick's, Liftex'. Brunswick, not so much anymore. We're laser cutting and forming. So, our equipment is flat sheet laser cutters. We have press brake forming and welding.
Okay.
So, metal fabrication.
And are you under the EEOC compliance?
We are.
Okay, all right. And will you be hiring?
Yes, we will.
Until this is approved?
Yeah, we would expect four to six new employees yet this year, possibly 10.
Okay.
Things are going very well.
And are you looking locally for employees, or what type of jobs are we talking about? High-tech jobs, entry-level positions?
You know, some of them are not high-tech, but I would call them fairly high-skilled. We are looking locally, and we are searching regionally, because it's more and more difficult, as I'm sure you've heard from other employers, to find skilled people. It's a real challenge.
Sure. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Trump?
I'll have to compliment you. After we approved you a few months ago, you guys went to work right away on construction, and we drive by there, and you've done a nice job there.
Well, thank you. Thank you, yeah. We're pressing ahead, we're excited to get in it, so.
Excited to have you in town.
Thank you.
On our side of the weeds.
Right.
Very good.
Thank you.
And not that I'm not interested in the rest of your business, but I have a niece has a new grandbaby, and I'm going to go meet the little guy, so I'm going to excuse myself. Thank you.
Very good, very good. If that is all, I'll ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue. Is that you, Mr. Garner?
Yes, I don't have my tie on. Guys are so nice, so nicely. I wasn't going to comment, but I just wanted to make one comment. Ed Garner, Muskegon area first, 380 West Western Avenue. We've been working with Mark Hoffman and Production Fabricators for some years now, and I just want to compliment, I think Mark's very, really conservative on what he's doing there. What, he has the, some of the most advanced laser cutting equipment in the industry. One piece of his machinery costs in the neighborhood of $800,000, is as long as from here probably where to the end of that room there. And he has several of those, which he's, so he's constantly been expanding his business there. We've worked with him with several other tax abatements in Muskegon Township. He's always performed as he, as he's indicated on his applications in terms of what he was going to do and, and his job creation numbers. And if I'm not correct, Mark did not say that, I believe this is really what he thinks will be the first phase of his expansion there, this, this first 10,000 or so square feet. And I think additionally, he wants to continue to add on the backend of that as well. So, I expect you're going to see Mr. Hoffman here, here, here again down the road, because his company is a very strong company throughout Muskegon County.
That's very good to hear.
Thank you.
We're just glad to have him on our side of the corporate line.
You're a trigger, man.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this topic? Now, entertain a motion to close the public hearing and to accept all this. Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
I move we close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for personal property for Production Fabricators.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasiviga, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 12 years for personal property for Production Fabricators. Discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Request to create a new neighborhood enterprise zone district at 316 Morris Street, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, pursuant to Public Act 147 of the Michigan Public Acts of 1992, the Hindman Company has requested to create a new neighborhood enterprise zone district for the parcel at 316 Morris Street for a residential addition to the seventh floor of the Terrace Plaza Building. Staff recommendation to hold the public hearing.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Franzick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this is to establish the new district. This is just the public hearing. We're not going to be acting on anything tonight. We just have to hold a public hearing, and then we'll be coming back on September 13 to see if we can issue the certificate or create the new district to when they can apply for the certificates afterwards. We couldn't get a representative from the Hindman Group here tonight, but they do plan on being here on September 13th. But what they plan on doing is taking the sixth floor and the seventh floor and creating apartment units. They're going to have 19 units on the sixth floor and one large apartment on the seventh floor, as well as a community and a workout room.
Well, that's exciting. That's great news.
This was a disappointment to me, because they closed the deli.
Yeah, it's closed.
And it's the best deli in town with the greatest view. So, when I saw this, that must be part of it.
Well, you come on over, and I'll have Sue make you a sandwich.
And I think that we should put the city manager up there.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mike, in case he has some additional background with Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Are they going to have to get some sort of building permit or site plan approval or something?
Yes, they're going to need both. They'll need a site plan approval, because it's a change of use, and they're going to need their building permits as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's an interesting conversion, so I've heard a couple comments about how it fits into the rest of the building and what some of the other tenants think, so I guess we'll get to address those later.
Yeah. And just to note, we were, actually, there's two parcels on, on the property. There's one that just encompasses the building. That's the legal description we're using to add to our NEZ district total, so we didn't have to use the entire parking lot, so that saves room for more.
Very good, very good. Anything else for, for Mike? All right, thank you. Commissioner Warren?
What is the projected timeline?
I believe they are looking at starting awfully quickly later this fall. They are, this is actually tied into a community renovation project, the CRP funds with the MEDC, which requires the city to also give some type of tax break as well to contribute towards that, and they're looking at using that very quickly. So, the plan's at breaking ground this fall.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, thank you, and we need to take no action on this, just to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren and supported by Commissioner Rensselaasiviga to close the, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't ask for a public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment or address this topic?
Before we close it.
If not, then we go back to where we were before I jumped the gun, that we have a motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Rensselaasiviga, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. May we have item C, please?
Request to create a new neighborhood enterprise zone district at 965 West Western Avenue and 920 Washington Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summary request, pursuant to Public Act 147 of the Michigan Public Acts of 1992, the PNG Holdings New York LLC has requested to create a new neighbor, neighborhood enterprise zone district for residential addition to the Watermark. Staff recommendation to hold the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Franzick, once again.
Again, this is just to hold the public hearing for the big project at the Watermark. This will encompass the residential component. Later, we'll be discussing the obsolete property certificate, which would cover the commercial portion. And we do have Sarah Sass from the Watermark here, as well as Jared Belka from Warner North Cross and Judd.
Any questions for staff on this issue?
Yeah, I would just like to kind of get some clarity and hear from probably Ms. Bubaker and the property owners, if they would like to just come up and speak on behalf of this project.
Sure. Good idea. Sarah Sass, Jared Belka?
Ask Mike a question before they...
Sure.
Is there an abatement on that property now?
It used to be in a Renaissance zone. Those expired, so...
There's nothing, no tax breaks or anything on that property at this time?
Currently, no, there's not.
This is all brand-new, beginning now?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Sarah Sass, Mr. Belka, Sarah, if you would just give your name and who you're representing and...
Sarah Sass with Watermark Center in downtown Muskegon.
And Jared Belka with Warner North Cross and Judd, here on behalf of the developer.
You were those guys there last night, weren't you?
We were. A little warmer there.
Yeah, it was very warm in there last night.
How would you like to proceed? Would you like to give a breakdown first as far as the parameters of where you're going with the project this time, then take questions?
Yeah, I think that'd probably be the best way to do it. We sent out some information today, and I think everybody probably has it in hand.
If you could get just a little closer to the mic or draw it towards you, that'd be good.
All right. And I think that it probably shows a little bit more in detail what we're planning. I know some of the questions that were raised last night were how we were going to address the rest of the property. Well, you'll see in the plans that we sent that it does address the balance of the property. One of the things that we found during our research phase was that that building in the corner could be saved, and we want to save it. And while we don't have a use for the building at this time, we'll be spending the time developing, working on that use for there. And in the meantime, we would address those windows. You know, we never said we wouldn't. We just need to have a good plan on how to address those windows. You know, if you want them boarded up, we'll board them up, but we'll fix those windows. And you can see too in here on the plan that most of the property on Western is, is addressed on there too. And you'll see that the residential portion takes up a good chunk of that. So, if you look at the overview, the photos, there's an aerial photo, you'll see kind of how small that building on the corner is in comparison to the whole project. So, the scope of use, we'll start out with the residential. We can get that out, and we can get that going, we can start the demo work. We have identified some of the buildings we'll take down right away, and that's also, you'll see that in the plan too. And we'll start with the residential. It's 128 market rate units, probably mostly two and three-bedroom, some one. And then from there, we'll go right into the commercial phase, which has a few different uses, you know, with restaurant, laser tag, trampoline park, concert venue, bowling, cyber sports, arcades, indoor bike parks, and rock climbing. So, and that phase alone is 350,000 square feet, which is the same size of the Walker Arena. So, we're talking a significant investment on our part, which is all total with demolition work, 33.5 million dollars.
So, the 33 is a correction to the 13 that we have...
Make sure he has to be recognized. You're recognized.
It's 33 million investment, not 13 that's in the write-up?
Correct, the 13 I think is for the commercial portion, the 33 is for commercial and residential combined.
Correct. The 33 represents the entire project investment. There are some specifics in there with the application that speak to rehab. Demolition and lead and asbestos are not considered rehab under that program, so it lists the rehab component. So, the total project investment's 33 in hard construction.
Anything, Commissioner Rensselaasiviga?
Right now, we're just discussing item C, the whole public hearing.
Right.
We're not down to...
No.
Okay.
Commissioner German?
Yeah. Okay, now, you do have apartments, condos in the facility...
That's correct.
...right now, because, you know, as commissioner, I've been contacted before about several complaints from some of your attendants, and they was displeased about some condition, living conditions there. So, I'd like to know, how are you going about addressing those concerns and holding whoever accountable for making sure that these citizens are satisfied with these unmet conditions?
Well, this is the first I've heard of it. If those are, if there are concerns, they haven't been brought to my attention. And we also have, we're inspected annually by the City of Muskegon, and if you want to come in and take a look, they're one of the most beautiful places to live in downtown Muskegon. I'm surprised by that.
Yeah, actually, I came down and I did view some of the condos and some of their issues that they had, and from what I was told, they did address that matter to the property owner, the manager of that facility. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, when we look at approving abatements and stuff like this, I want to make sure that it's a win-win situation for, you know, the business owner, also the citizens and the community as well.
Absolutely. You know, we had, last year, we had a problem with a water pipe that broke from, when we were, from back under construction. It affected four units, and those are probably the four, or two of the four that you've heard from. You know, we took care of the problem, and we're moving forward. The rest of the building is in great condition.
Okay. One other question also. Now, this property has been sitting there for a while now, and I'm talking about that actual portion where you're talking about doing demolition to. How long has that property sat there before now, for this time, before you started to make advancements for redevelopment?
You know, I'm not sure. When I started, it was in 2002 when we broke ground, and since then, you know, we, I mean, what is your question, like, how long has it sat?
Right, before you just started to, go ahead, and started to do something for us, giving it more or less a facelift, because I've been past this property several times over the years, and it's just kind of sat there. And I do know, I believe this is the same property that one of the gentlemen talked about, was it from the gentleman from Preconals that came in and had some complaints and complained about his neighbor's properties, you know, being the eyesore to the community?
Oh, sure.
So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we do this and we do this correctly, but I just kind of want to know, how long have this property sat before you decided to do something? Because when we have other citizens coming in complaining, I kind of thought maybe, well, it was kind of, you know, not as appropriate how he did it, but he kind of cares about his property as well as the city, and we do everything we can to make sure that the property here in the City of Muskegon is beautified and, and well-maintained, so.
Right. We, the last time that we were under construction with, the, the last phase was in 2005, and so that would took almost a year to complete, and that was the event center. And from there, we also worked on putting in some new lights, we fixed up the parking lots, and you can see I attached or put in this information, some before and after photos of what the property did look like, including the Western Avenue side. So, you see in there too that over the last year, we've put a lot of time and money into working on securing the first floor of the property, removing brush, removing grates.
Counsel? If I could also add to that, I think, I think it's important to realize the massive
amount of square feet this building consumes. I mean, you're talking a million square feet.
Exactly.
I think people sometimes fail to realize how much actually goes into pre-development stage before somebody can stick a shovel in the ground or start swinging a hammer. And I think if somebody sat down and actually went through that, witnessed that firsthand, they'd have a much better respect for the entire process. So this group has been diligent in their approach. They are into taking calculated risk, not catastrophic, not developing just to develop, but doing it in something that brings an asset to the community and both the ownership group. So again, I think the point there is, they've made strides. The movie theater, obviously, given the governor pulling the incentives, that was put on hold, and they were back to deciding what should be done with the rest of the building. So they've been making strides ever since they've owned it. Fact is, it's a huge building, and it's a huge undertaking.
And to that point, you know, some of the things that you guys haven't seen too, is we put a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar roof on Knoll and retained them. That's fifty more jobs downtown. So, you know, some of the stuff that you haven't seen happens behind the scenes and may not be aware of, but we are continually putting money into the project.
And that's great. And I-
Let's make sure we, and then we can come back around if there's any follow-ups. But let's open with question, one follow-up, and then let's make sure that every Commissioner gets an opportunity. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I had a constituent contact today about parking, concerns about parking in that area and traffic. I see here in this schematic, we've got additional parking, quite a bit more parking across the street of Division. And I see the original schematic has that corner building demoed, and you have parking there. It's about sixty-some spots altogether. Where are you going to be moving that parking to otherwise? Are you going to try to find parking within that corner building? Are you going to build a garage elsewhere on-site? And then, just to jump on your comment about Knoll, that's going to be staying there? I mean, there's no plans for removing that, or, and they have a long-term commitment to using that? Okay. Thanks for answering that last question quickly, even though if you could just get back to the parking situation, I appreciate it.
The parking, we also own five acres across the street, so that will be the bulk of the parking. And there's parking in the residential, if you'll look in the map too, in the first floor, there's indoor parking. And some of those places that we lose for that building in the corner will just absorb, you know, elsewhere and make, we could probably put some more over in Knoll or something. We can work through a plan to fix that. I'd rather save that building than, you know.
Me too. And if I may, just make one more comment right this moment. This information you shared to us about the history of that complex preceding your time there and ownership by A and M Group, also documenting the steps you've taken since A and M has taken ownership of it, the twelve million dollar plus investment, your community relations, you've done, you've given quite a bit back to the community in your capacity. I know that firsthand, and that's very much appreciated. You've been a pretty good partner with the NIMs Neighborhood Association in terms of hosting NIMs events, including our National Night Out meetings, and also contributed to the playground there, and been very accommodating of the Neighborhood Association. And there's a long list of other things you've done to give back to the community. I know you do free events, concerts at Watermark nine twenty as well, in which the neighborhood and the public's invited. You also do shows there that give to charity. So you definitely are community-minded in that regard, without a doubt, and I appreciate that. And I know there's been ups and downs with this project overall, things not happening the way we were expecting it. There have been hiccups, and you've been trucking along. And I know we brought up at our annual goal-setting session last year, concerns about this building and lack of development, or the seeming lack of progress, also some of the environmental conditions. But you have taken strides to improve, particularly when it comes to landscaping there. I've seen it, I drive by there every day, and I see it being done. I still have concerns about, obviously, the public safety concerns with the building decaying, and also light. But I just want, I think it'd be helpful for you to emphasize more of your story to the public. People don't see that, people don't realize that, and people don't appreciate that. People are rightly frustrated by the blight and lack of development there, I think. People get impatient, and that's understandable. We want all of our city to be beautiful, and as do you, I'm sure. So I just want to say I appreciate this background and outline, and I hope you'll do more to share your story with the public going forward, and include the community too going forward in dialogue about the development of the building. I understand a lot of this was done behind the scenes, not aware. I mean, the city had been working with you on a monthly basis over the past sixteen months or so, since we talked about it in our goal-setting session. And for us, it had to remain confidential. You know, we couldn't speak about this to the community. But I encourage you to foster more dialogue with the community about this going forward, especially as our citizens, by approving any of these tax abatements, our citizens are taking a stake in this project. We are investors in this project. So I would encourage you to foster more dialogue.
I think, I mean, to your point, we're all, the people involved in this project, I mean, we do have ownership out of New York, but we're all Muskegonites. I'm a fourth generation, you know, the rest of our team here too, they're all Muskegonites. We love our hometown, and we feel it's important to give back to the community too. I would love the opportunity to do more. And we do need to do a better job at telling our story, but we're all busy working, so, yes, we do.
You do. Commissioner Warren?
Just to clarify, is the corner building that's missing that we're all talking about, does it take up the entire corner on the original word parking?
In this, in this, there's an aerial shot, and you can have, you can see a good view of it.
Okay, so what's all this that's going to be-
There's no building. The black is what's going to be demoed.
That's going to be demoed, okay, so-
There'll still be some parking.
There would still be some parking and some, so that corner building will end up standing alone?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then in the meantime, is there talk of a new screen or anything that's, because what's over it now has helped some, is there any discussion from a quick Band-Aid type of approach?
Yeah, I would like to put up something like that. You know, we could work on that solution too, because I would like to see something up there too. I'm not sure that, you know, if it's boarded up windows the way that we're pointing to go, we'll do that, but I think that there's probably something more creative we could do.
Okay. Thank you.
You could watch us go, Banner, you know, I don't know.
Commissioner Rizma saving up?
So I'm looking at the phases, so, and it's a little, it goes, well, buildings, basically on the diagram, buildings are numbered, and those are the phases, right? So, I mean, building one is done, building two is done on the initial aerial shot. This one right here.
Yeah. Yep, one is done, two is done-
Two is the current, yeah, so three would be the next phase?
Well, we were originally going to go with three, and now we're going to switch, start with four and do three. They're going to be both done simultaneously, but we're going to concentrate on four.
Okay.
Which is all along Western, and it, but that's all the residential right there.
That's all the residential?
That's all the residential. It goes in a U like this.
Yes. So the NEZ, the residential construction is that U building?
Correct.
Okay. So this, the NEZ just is for that parcel then? Those two addresses, but that parcel, or building?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many units is that again?
Hundred and twenty-eight market rate.
Okay.
Oh, and first floor commercial too, lots of first floor commercial spots in there as well.
I'm easily confused. The corner building you said is coming down?
No.
No, it's not coming down.
This is not a correct.
This is not correct, because it shows parking in the pond, and it's staying there.
Initially, but through consultation with structural engineers, they decided that it could be saved.
How many current apartments are in the original Watermark?
There's fifty-three.
Fifty-three, and what is your occupancy rate?
Hundred percent with a waiting list.
Hundred percent. Good.
Yeah. This is, maybe if I can show you, this is what we're talking about right here, is this corner building?
Yeah.
That's what it doesn't show.
Commissioner German, any follow-up?
No, just kind of piggyback off what Commissioner Johnson stated. I think it's important to also, like he said, to engage the community. That was one of my next comments that I was going to say, also because they are stakeholders in the community. And by approving these type of abating, tax abatements, I think it's very critical to also get some input from them as well.
Yeah. Well, and I think, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but I think that's why, part of the reason why I wanted to keep that building on the corner too, is to engage the community. And once we start going along this process, there might be a use that we haven't even thought of that would fit that part.
Yeah.
So that would be a great way to engage the community.
Right. And the building looks nice. I've been in it before, and I've seen certain areas of it, and I think you've done a tremendous job. And I know it takes time and a lot of planning and, you know, to get a project like this to its full potential, so thank you, and good luck.
Now, Sarah, part of the phase, now you're going to move right into demolition of a large portion along Western Avenue, between the Albert Kahn Building, the original, and the newer section-
Correct.
-which will abut Knoll, correct?
That's correct.
And then you also take out the old interior office.
Yeah, that's correct. That'll be the first part that you see going, is that old interior office on Division.
Right, the old office entrance on Division.
Yeah.
That'll go. Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
How soon do you expect demolition to get underway surrounding the-
We're ready to go. This is our first steps.
So-
As soon as all the-
Because yesterday, so the demolition is going to get underway, because yesterday you mentioned you're going to be doing the residential phase first, but you're going to get the demolition underway around that corner building in tandem. And so we could see deconstruction happening-
Correct.
When?
As soon as all the, at the current timelines that were projected to be, the necessary approvals would likely be in place by fall.
Okay.
So we'd have to wait until the necessary approvals are in place, but subject to-
Okay. One other question, if I may, Mr. Smith?
Sure.
You mentioned the current units in Watermark are one hundred percent occupied. What portion of that is owned versus rented?
There's fifty-three units, twenty-one are sold, and the balance are rented.
Okay. And when you get the one hundred and twenty-eight new units available for rent, is that where going to be your focus is in renting out going forward, and then trying to sell some of the original that were slated for condominiums?
We, you know, everything, yeah. I mean, everything's always for sale, for sure.
Okay. The reason why I ask is-
I don't know what you're going with the question, but yeah.
The reason why I ask is that some of the condo owners there already are, you know, concerned that they're disenfranchised, they're disempowered there already, because there are not enough units sold and privately owned for the condo board to have control, so to speak. And so that's why I was inquiring. I mean, obviously, the lack of control is not something that could allow me to deny your incentives, but I just want to share that concern from some of the condo owners there. And I do feel for them. I want you buy into a condo development as an owner, and you expect to have some stake, some control in your living environment. And so I feel for them, and I'd like to, you know, empower them, and hopefully we can get to the day when, you know, those fifty-three current units are owner-occupied versus rented.
That's noted.
Thank you.
Okay. Any follow-up, Commissioner Warren? No? Okay. Thank you for phase one of questioning. And at this juncture, I'll see if there's any members of the public that would like to make a statement. You want to go out this time?
Thank you, I appreciate that, because I have a six-thirty meeting to go to. So come, one minute.
Again, we just need your name and address, and you're allowed at three minutes.
My name is Cindy Brady, and as some members of the commission know, I have two addresses, eighteen-twenty Edgewater Street and nine-thirty Washington, Unit five M, which is in the Watermark Building. And I am one of those condominium owners, and I'm not disenfranchised, although I do understand how some of the condominium owners do feel. And the problem really is not with so much the association, but with the current banking environment and the unwillingness to loan on condominiums. It's a real problem. So if we can change that banking environment, perhaps we can change the selling environment for condominiums and make it better for all of us in that environment. My husband and I are buyer's number one within the Watermark. It's a beautiful building. You're welcome to come anytime. Our unit is gorgeous, it sits on the top floor. It's our hideaway. It allows us to have dinner downtown and walk to Heritage Landing, and to do many things, and to stay warm in the winter, because we have an old converted cottage on Edgewater Street that's just freezing in January and February. We're very much in favor of this project. And what you don't see is that there has been planning and development and ideas and brainstorming and development on what to do and how to develop this project from the inside out for several years now. And because I sit on the board of that condominium association, I've been privy to about this much of the details and some of the ideas, and they have worked very hard and very systematically and very methodically, and kept it under wraps so that they could go forward and try not to make mistakes and not disappoint this community any further by making false promises that they could not keep, unlike some of the developers who have come to this town and asked and promised the moon and then left. The Watermark is not a fractured condominium project. It is complete. All fifty-six units were done, which is really, to the, to, I think, lauds the praises of this development company. They could have turned their back, walked out, and left it half-done, but they didn't. It's all there, and it's fully occupied, and they've continued on. I think that we can take that and put it in the bank. When they say that they're going to complete this project and move forward, they will complete this project and move forward. My children don't live in Muskegon anymore, like many of us, don't have our kids in town, which is our own crosses to bear. But my younger son came home, because it's Bob's birthday today, so I'm headed out of here for one meeting and then dinner, and he happens to be a member of a mountain biking association. I didn't tell him this because I was keeping it secret, but he told me that he'd heard about it from a mountain biking association five states away. And they can't wait for this project to open. If they're hearing about it five states away, I'm enthused, I can't wait for it either. So I'm excited. I hope that we can all get excited and be beyond this, because I think that P and G has been great neighbors and made a great contribution to Muskegon, and I hope that they will be able to continue and get everybody's support. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Jen?
Hi, I'm Jen Sanaki. I live at fourteen-seventeen Lake Shore Drive, and I'm here as a resident of the NIMs Neighborhood, but also a board member of the NIMs Neighborhood Association. And I do not want to take away from the greatness that I think this development is, that I think it's spectacular. I'm glad that something's finally going to happen there. And so I don't, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer about development, because I'm not. But I do want to share my concerns, like I said, as a resident of the neighborhood, as a resident of the city, and as a board member of our Neighborhood Association. So here goes. As a longtime resident of NIMs Neighborhood, and someone who has decided to raise my kids and take care of my home here in the city, I feel the need to share frustration that I felt upon hearing that the building on the corner of Western and Division is not included in the master plan of the development. I'm not so much concerned that it's not in the development plans as I am that there are no plans to improve the aesthetics and take care of the safety hazard that is that building. As a member of the NIMs Neighborhood Association, I cannot tell you the number of Neighborhood Association meetings that I've sat through, that continually, 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 residents bring up the terribleness of that building. It looks awful, it's dangerous, it looks awful. What I heard yesterday is that there's no commitment to address the building, which is very concerning, given the location and prominence of that building. This building and its disrepair slaps you in the face every time you enter or exit my neighborhood, or every time you approach downtown or exit downtown via Western Avenue. Every time. That's what you drive by, every single time. I am disappointed and disheartened that in the behind-the-scenes discussion with the developer and city staff about the development that they are proposing, staff did not include a requirement that this building be addressed. I have pictures, but I don't think it's necessary to show them. We all know what it looks like, because we've seen it for years. We've seen it for years. Again, for the city staff to not convey that in the talks with the developer is pretty disappointing, because, I mean, I know it's come up here before Ted Fracano and his dramatics, but I know it's come up here, I've had multiple conversations with the mayor, I've had multiple conversations with Commissioner Johnson. This is not a surprise that we don't want to look at this anymore. I have heard many times that we have to remember that we are talking about one million square feet, and it is going to take time to develop. My answer to that is, this property was not bought sight unseen. When they purchased this property, they were well aware of the massiveness. And it's been years, it's been years since we've been looking at that.[1797.91] Just as residents in my neighborhood cannot use the excuse that their property is too big to take care of, I don't think that is right for out-of-town developers to get a free pass on maintaining their own property. I also read a quote saying something to the effect that just because you don't see cranes doesn't mean that nothing is happening. As a resident that has to drive by that property multiple times a day, my concern is not what the inside of the property looks like or the parts of the property that are not so prominent on Western Avenue. I own a well-maintained home and I have no plan on moving into the development. So to me, what is happening on the inside is of little concern. What is a concern is what visitors see as they head to and from downtown to the lake and the safety hazard that is posed by the falling glass. It was mentioned last night that while there is no commitment to address the blight on the corner of Western and Division, it would be in the best interest of the developer to clean it up. I'm not sure how this phase of the project changes what is in their best interest as they clearly haven't seen this as a priority during past phases of the project. At last night's work section, we spoke lengths about making investments at Pyramid Market and needing to make sure that we would get a large return on our investments. While I agree that making smart investments to one of our largest assets is important, I find it interesting that we balk at spending money on our beautiful beach for the benefit of city residents, yet we are willing to freely give tax subsidies out left and right to developers without a second thought. I don't want to come off as anti-development because I'm not. I absolutely agree that something has to be done with the massive property that is the Watermark. I also know that in order to spur growth and development, the city does need to give tax incentives to developers. I am asking, though, that the commission give serious thought to tabling these incentives for Watermark until there is a firm commitment in writing to address what the citizens of the city and my neighborhood have had to look at for over a decade now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Are there any members, other members of the public? Mr. Pesh and then Shirley. Shirley, Ron, and then you.
Hi, I'm Ron Pesh, 1317 Lake Shore Drive. I have nothing but praise for the work that has been done at that site by the investors. It's phenomenal what they've been able to do on the Washington Street side and up the hill on Division. I, too, am very, very concerned about the building at Western and Division. The five-story building has a very significant architectural history. It has been advertised for the last certainly five years and probably beyond as that feature point. Right now, there's a large tapestry that hangs down that shows what it could look like. I'm thrilled to hear the building has been identified as something that can be saved. It's a point of reference that I use in this town when I point to the history of that. I grew up at Washington and Henry Street, so I'm very familiar with that. One of the things that I would like to see before we advance and grant the tax break would be a revised version of the proposal that shows exactly what the plans will be to make sure that building is saved and used. I would hate to find, after waiting 15 years, to see something happen that in the end, a determination's made that, I'm sorry, we can't save it. Right now, today, you've identified that it can be saved. I think it should be part of the plan and seen by the board as opposed to one where everyone keeps getting confused, is the building coming down or not? Something updated to show that that is part of it and that it should be prioritized so that when this is unveiled, that building is part of that. Albert Kahn is well-known around the world. And to have that in the city of Muskegon versus the city of Detroit, where they have a number of those, I think is very, very important. That's my statement.
Very good. Thank you, Ron. Shirley?
Shirley Green, 2574 Morton Avenue. A couple of years ago, I attended a state NOM meeting. We had a speaker there, a minister from Flint, who worked on rehabbing abandoned homes in the Flint area. He worked with a group there that they bought these windows that look real. And the amount that they paid for it wasn't that much. But we would have to check with our community neighborhood minutes to find out who he was, to find out where these windows were purchased. They're just fake windows that cover the broken windows and that that's there already. And he showed pictures of homes and that, that even though people weren't living in them, they got kids to help clean up the yard. And it looks just like people are living there with these new doors and windows. And that would possibly be an idea that they could look into. And it would make it look nice.
Sure.
But we'd have to check with, say, him for minutes.
Yeah, we can get that through CNS.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Shirley. Are there any other members that would like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner?
Close the hearing.
Second? Been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by either Commissioner Johnson or Commissioner Rizma Saviaga, but we'll give it to Johnson this time to close the public hearing. Any further comment or discussion from the commission? All right, thank you.
I just wanted to clear.
Oh, yes.
Because of what we are approving today, what we're voting on today, is the U building, right?
Well, we're not... Right now, we're taking no action. We just held...
Oh, I'll move on to the next one.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay. Item D, please.
We need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote. Roll call.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizma Saviaga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now, item D.
Request to establish an obsolete property district, 920 Washington Avenue. Planning economic development. Summary request. Pursuant to Public Act 146 of the Michigan Public Acts of 2000, P&amp;G Holdings, New York LLC has requested the establishment of an obsolete property district for their property at 920 Washington Avenue. The establishment of the obsolete property district would allow them to apply for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the obsolete property district.
Mr. Franzick?
So yes, this is for the commercial component of the project. This would, the certificate would freeze the taxes at the pre-rehabilitated rate for up to 12 years. We would first need to create the district and then we would have to have the hearing on granting of the certificate.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Franzick on the commercial element and the obsolete property district creation? Commissioner Rizma Saviaga?
Is there any jobs related to this?
Yes. It is listed in the application. I'm not sure if I have that attachment. Do you know how many jobs? 125 was stated in the application, 125-plus.
So that's in the commercial portion?
Correct.
And that makes it eligible for 12 years?
Yes, the amount of the investment, the 13 million, and also the job creation, either one would qualify for 12 years, the full abatement.
And just to be clear, it's not, it's not, they're paying a current amount of taxes on this commercial building. It's what, when they would make the improvements, the taxes would go up?
Correct.
And then they would not have to pay the amount that it would go up because of the improvements for the period?
Correct. So after the investment is made, the taxes would go up significantly. But this credit would freeze them at what they are at right now for 12 years.
So we wouldn't, we're not giving them any money?
No. And matter of fact, if, you know, the project were to fall through and no investment was made, the city would not lose anything out of it.
They would just keep paying their current level of taxes?
They would, they would care, it would freeze them, you know, and taxes can fluctuate, they could go up a little every year. But we would have the right within two years to, if the project is not completed, we could revoke the certificate, which we've done in the past on other projects.
And then after the period is over, the taxes would go up to the improved value?
They would go up to whatever equalization determined that the taxes would be at. They would go up because the project...
No, they would be, I mean, it would be still the SCV, the equalized value wouldn't change, but they would just start paying the full amount.
Correct.
Oh, you can go ahead. Okay. Commissioner Turnquist?
Paragraph D, we're just creating the district so that they can apply for the abatement in the next paragraph. And how is that area zoned or what is, what's it known as now? What is it?
Well, the district is, is, you need to create an obsolete property rehabilitation district in order to get the certificate. So this isn't really tied in with their zoning district. It's a completely different tool that we use strictly for economic development.
So right now, it's not an obsolete property? They didn't do that with the first phase?
Right, they did not utilize that tool.
So we're not giving anything monetarily here? This is just creating the district so that they can ask for...
For the certificate?
For the next, okay.
Which is going to happen next?
Right after this, yes.
Today.
Commissioner German?
Yeah, mine's more or less a question than a comment. Okay, requesting to establish this obsolete property district. And then we will come back and have in front of us the request for the actual neighborhood enterprise zone to give the tax abatement itself.
Well, the NEZ we already did.
Okay.
We didn't grant it, we just had the public hearing. We'll have to come back for that.
Okay.
Right now, we're gonna, item D is to establish the district. And once the district is established, you are allowed to apply for the certificate. And the state tax commission says that we're allowed to do that at the same meeting. So that's what we'll be handling both of those tonight.
Okay. And approve the abatement?
Yeah, that would be item E, the actual abatement.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at now?
D, we're on D right now just to create the district and then, but they're related, it's the same project.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, one of the citizens I mentioned, and I'm business-friendly also as a representative for commissioner for the city of Muskegon. And I look at these tax abatement that we give these private owners and these businesses to pay and have advantages to pour into their property. But, you know, then I look at neighborhoods around here in the community and I see the disparities and the disproportionate of, you know, the communities that's not being cared for as well. And I guess my question is, you know, you know, when we give these, I want to make sure that the project is done correctly, everyone's held accountable. And also, are these businesses actually contributing back to the community and the city where we can just kind of more or less pour into these communities that have these disparities?
Well, the incentive is to make it feasible for the project to go through.
Right, right.
So that, in a sense, is...
For 12 years, right?
Correct, it would be for 12 years. And also, just to note, we do have the neighborhood enterprise zones. We do have those throughout the city, not everywhere. But there are certain districts that, so some of the lower-income areas are eligible for improving their homes. They're actually eligible to get these neighborhood enterprise zone certificates as well for improvements on their homes.
Okay. Would you happen to know right offhand, those actual neighborhoods that are, could be approved or have...
It's a lot of downtown. It extends just north of here, over on Houston, I believe, is the boundary, going west towards Fifth or Sixth Street. And it goes all the way south down for a couple of miles. And there's a couple of different ones throughout the city. But mainly, just south of the downtown is...
I'm sure that Mr. Franzick would be able to get those mapped out. But we got to reel this back in and get specific to...
And just one more question, actually, maybe if I could. But, you know, it just seems to now that we're excluding other areas also when it comes to those type of, those type of benefits. So that's what, the problem that I have. Because when I say disproportionate are the disparities that these other neighborhoods don't have that option to receive those tax credits or breaks or whatever, you know. I have a difficult time approving something like this. Go ahead.
I think that the, we've had those programs like obsolete property and neighborhood enterprise zones. And I think we've approved every one that has been suggested for the last number of years. So if there's a problem with the program, then we should address that with the program. But this particular request has to do with, you know, following...
Right.
What we've done before. So those, it seems to me those questions might be behind or, you know, more foundational and not really, you know, where you can get an obsolete property certificate or where you can get a neighborhood enterprise zone. Those have been, I guess, pretty much accepted by this group.
And there's a lot of parameters set outside of this governmental unit because of who creates these tools, which we're allowed to give. But, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, there's one thing I wanted to point out for Commissioner German. We can only have 15% of our city in a neighborhood enterprise zone. So we, so just strictly by that requirement, we couldn't apply this to every single body in the city. And so it's designed to get, you know, potential projects or projects that are difficult to get done. It's designed to be an incentive to get those done. So for example, maybe on Beach Street, down by Pyramid Market Park, there probably would be zero of them, right? Because there's not as much of a need. But in Nelson Neighborhoods, there might be more of a need. We use it at Midtown Square to get those ones, to get those ones done. We did actually use them at Terrace Point Landing to help with the parkland properties redevelopment over there with the new homes there. I think one of the things that we'll find is that, and it's important to point out here even in this project, is just because somebody puts, say, $13 million in a building does not mean that the taxes were ever going to go up, $13 million worth of value, you know. There's still going to be an appraised value there. So these folks might put $13 million into a building and it might affect the taxable value by just a few million dollars because the market's going to hold what the market holds as far as the value of the building. And the same thing with the houses. I'll give you an example. I made a major investment in a house on Jefferson Street. I didn't apply for the NEZ. But I'll tell you now, my taxable value is actually a little bit less than it was before I started the project because it was taxed at the appropriate rate and the money I put into it didn't necessarily raise the taxable value of it. The taxable value essentially stayed very, 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 very similar. So a lot of the, a lot of the things that you might see in those neighborhoods, they could put $100,000 into a lot of those houses. That doesn't mean it's going to add $100,000 in taxable value onto the property. So the, so the benefit to those individuals is a lot less. So if they put 100 grand into it and the value only goes up, say, $10,000, the value of the certificate is, you know, is in the tens of dollars a year, not even in, not even in the hundreds of dollars. The savings isn't really, isn't really a big incentive for them necessarily.
Commissioner Johnson?
If I may, this conversation and discussion's got me jogged up. Question about the NEZ. If I may ask a question about the NEZ and then follow with some remarks on the Oprah certificate? Mr. Mayor?
If you must.
Thank you, yes. With regard to the NEZs, you mentioned we have several areas throughout our city that have them. How frequently do we notify property owners in there? Because I think that is important that, you know, private, you know, residents, you know, individual residents have an opportunity to avail themselves of the NEZ and get the same kind of tax relief if they make investments in their properties. So how frequently do we notify the people that live in these NEZ districts? Do we do it on an annual basis? Do we do it every other year? Do we do it every five years? Do we do it at all? And if we don't do it now, how can we implement a program so that we can notify people that live in NEZs that these options are available to you?
Yeah, we have the information available on our website. And the community and neighborhood services does a good job, too, when they're working with families that are looking to do upgrades of their home. They can be notified that way. We don't have any type of direct mailing or notification. But if we hear that somebody's trying to do a project or looking for an incentive, we definitely share the information.
Thank you. I would encourage our city manager and staff to look at... I would, I would encourage our city manager and staff to look at helping to inform the residents in that areas, that those opportunities do exist. I mean, a lot of people don't know it, they're not, can necessarily think, I'm gonna go online to, to check for these incentives for themselves, they're, they're just not familiar with the program and that district. So as part of our overall anti-blite efforts, I would strongly encourage staff to find ways to, to notify those property owners in there. And then I do have some, some comments about the Oprah certificate. I prepared these remarks beforehand, just because I sometimes go off in tangents when I'm speaking and, and lose track of thoughts, so. So I just got some prepared remarks on the Oprah, and partially it's addressed to Ms. Sass. So I went into last night's work session, fully intending to support Watermark's requested tax incentives in support of its $33 million investment in our city. That's a major investment. And the plans for mixed-use development and apartments, with apartments and commercial space for numerous entertainment options are, without a doubt, exciting. And while some of my constituents have balked at awarding Watermark any tax incentives, I carefully consider that this investment would still increase our tax base in the near term, and more considerably so in the long term. Furthermore, this investment allows for the rehabilitation of currently dilapidated and unused buildings along our lakeshore, and will help revitalize our downtown and foster further economic development, including the creation of jobs. However, I was dismayed to learn last night that the five-story building on the corner of Division Street and Western Avenue was not included in Watermark's development, redevelopment plans. I was further disheartened that Watermark had no plans for addressing the blight and public safety concerns associated with this highly visible building that impacts the NIMs neighborhood and our downtown, and the image of Muskegon overall. As a result, I was inclined to delay awarding any tax incentives until a plan was created for resolving the blight and public safety concerns. I conveyed my position to our city manager today, whom conferred with Ms. Sass about the matter. I was relieved to hear back that Watermark is willing to place a wrap on the entirety of the corner building. As long as this wrap covers up the blight and protects against falling glass and materials onto the sidewalk, that would, that would be an acceptable stop-get measure as Watermark pursues its next phases of redevelopment and works out eventual redevelopment of this highly visible and historically significant corner building. So I asked you, Ms. Sass, can you please confirm that it is Watermark, Watermark's intention to install such a wrap or find other adequate means for ensuring the public safety and combating the blight of that building in the near term?
Is this the forum to respond?
Yes.
I mean, I, Commissioner, I'll respond on her behalf. The intention is to keep this building. If the intention is to invest 33 and a half million dollars into this building and keep this portion of the building, the developer is not gonna let the thing sit and rot. They're gonna protect their asset, and they're gonna do what the structural engineers and general contractors suggest is necessary. I stepped up here because I don't want her to commit to something if the structural engineers and contractors make some other suggestion. They're gonna do whatever is necessary to secure that building and keep it. It's a timber building, they cannot just let it sit and rot, and that's not the intention. The intention is to invest 33 and a half million dollars in this project, keep that building. What they don't have is a current use, and I think that's where the discussion last evening was misconstrued. They don't have a current tenant, they don't have a current use identified for that building. That building is intended to remain as part of this project. So I think that's what needs to be clarified here. Any necessary investment will be made to secure and keep that asset a viable building in the community, rather than demolish it like it was originally considered. I, I, I hope that answers your question. I don't want them committing to any specific, by, by replacing all the windows now, it may not be necessary. It may fall within the construction timeline, and the contractor says, well, we can line that up with this particular aspect of the development. The intention is to keep it and make the necessary investments to secure the asset, keep it a safe building in the community, and get that building redeveloped.
And, and I appreciate that, that Watermark's intending to save that building and eventually rehab it. I really wish, I'd just gotten a simple yes on that. I gave enough wiggle room in terms of flexibility, in terms of how you secure, how do you promote public safety and combat the blight without stipulating that it has to be a wrap or it has to be boarded up. There's not wiggle room there. And Ms. Sass has already indicated tonight on a couple occasions that that is her intent. So I, I wanted confirmation that that is the intent, and Sarah is personally committing as such to that, and that she's gonna do everything with her power to ensure that that building is safe for our community and pedestrians walking by and working to combat the blight of that building, because it is highly visible. You can see it, as people have said before, you can see it prominent in our, in the NIMs neighborhood, it's prominent from downtown as you come in and out. And so I really want assurances that that is going to be addressed.
I, I think she's taken steps to do so. What, what I think I'd like to avoid is negotiating in a public forum here at the podium. I mean, she's committed to it, she's committed to the city manager, the city manager shared those communications with you, and I think we've covered that here.
Okay.
That the intent is to, the intent is to secure that building, keep it as an asset in the community, which includes taking any necessary steps to preserve that building.
Okay. I'm, um, not, not, I'm wrapping up. I'm not enthralled that I don't get a simple yes, that's, that's what we're gonna do, you know? However, I would have loved to say, pleased to hear that, pleased to hear the yes. However, I'm still prepared to support today's obsolete property rehabilitation certificate request, and I can support this request as it carries a dollar amount needed to be invested in the commercial redevelopment phase, $13 million, and has a two-year deadline. Where Watermark not to meet the stipulations of this Oprah certificate, the city has the option to revoke it, and Watermark would forfeit its tax savings. However, when the request for creation of a neighborhood enterprise zone district and awarding of a tax savings certificate comes before the commission in a couple months, I expect to see either steps have taken to shore up that building and ensure its public safety and combat the blight, or either that already be fixed or concrete plan for addressing it, whether that's documents showing what the cost is gonna be, concepts for how you're gonna do it, bids having been, been either, you know, put out for proposal or, or awarded, and a timeline for installation. And I think that's the least the citizens of Muskegon should expect as the commission commits them to being major investors in the Watermark development by way of the tax incentives awarded. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Rensma-Savicka?
Um, this is a question for Mike, maybe. Is the, is the corner building in the district, obsolete property district?
Uh, yes, there's two parcels, 920 Washington and 965 Western.
Because there's like a legal description in the packet, so I'm assuming...
Yeah, so this one is included on the Washington one.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, commissioners? Are there any members of the public that would like to address this part of the conversation? Not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and to create the obsolete property district. Commissioner Rensma-Savicka?
I move we close the public hearing and create the obsolete property district at 920 Washington.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Rensma-Savicka, seconded by Commissioner Sherman, to close the public hearing and approve the obsolete property district for 920 Washington Avenue. Any wrap-ups, comments, or questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Just want to reiterate that I am supporting this Oprah certificate, the creation of this district and subsequent awarding of this certificate because of the stipulations associated with it. In terms of the $13 million investment, that is what expected and that's what's warranted to get those tax savings, and that has a two-year timeline. And so, given those stipulations, I feel comfortable supporting this right now, but I, I still reserve my support for the NEZ subsequently unless my concerns and those of our citizens are addressed with regard to the public safety and blight of the corner building. But I do appreciate you coming here tonight, and I greatly appreciate the diligent work you and your team have done to work towards rehabbing that complex. It's a massive undertaking, and I, and I don't want to slight you at all. I, I, I want everyone to win and it to be a community collaborative effort, so, thank you.
Mr. Warren?
Excuse me. I just want to share similar concerns. We all know that that corner building is ugly. We know that, we see that. To put it really simply and short, I think the pros outweigh the cons, and not just of this project, but even our downtown. Anytime we talk about it as an eyesore, it is a, it is a small part of, of our city and of our community. So to put it simply, I mean, whether you want to talk about from an aesthetic standpoint or job creation, or more market rate housing, I really think the pros outweigh the cons, and I'm in support of this.
Great, thank you. Anything else, commissioners? There you have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensma-Savicka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Are you still there, Michael?
I'm still here.
Okay, I mean, we have item E, please.
Request to issue an obsolete property certificate, P&amp;G Holdings, New York LLC, 920 Washington Avenue, planning economic development. Summary request pursuant to Public Act 146 of the Michigan Public Acts of 2000. P&amp;G Holdings, New York LLC, has requested the issuance of an obsolete property certificate for the property located at 920 Washington Avenue. Total capital investment in this project is estimated at $13 million. The applicant is eligible for a 12-year abatement because of the amount of investment. Staff recommendations, staff recommends approval of the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate.
Okay, we've already done all the heavy lifting with item D, which now leads to, do we give them the certificate now that we've got the district? Are there any further questions?
I'd like to make a statement without, on, on item E, without a timeline, without some evidence that the neighbors and NIMs Association, the rest of the citizens of Muskegon, I cannot support this.
Any, Commissioner Warren?
I have a question. As far as the applicant being eligible for the 12-year abatement, is that a city thing? Is that a state thing? Where is that eligibility criteria come from?
The state allows anywhere between six and 12 years, and we have thresholds based on investment numbers or job creation. So if it was the $13 million and no jobs, they would qualify for the 12 years, or if it was a smaller investment in the 125 jobs, either or, it would qualify them under our internal policy for the 12 years.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, you have clarification?
Yeah, I think I, I do want to clarify that the, that the certificate does come with a two-year timeline for completion for Commissioner Turnquist. So he doesn't, we do know that there is a timeline, a two-year completion from the issuance.
I've lived here 16 years, and the appearance of that building has not changed on Western Avenue. Another two years, I think the citizens are tired of looking at it, and nothing has been done. A half-hearted cleanup with putting boards on the lower level of the windows was never completed. There's windows on Division Street up high, there's a few over here, there's more broken-out areas, and, and that's just irresponsible and a part of the owners of that building. And until they say September 1st, we're gonna be, start working on it, and this is what's gonna happen, they can wait the whole two years to get their engineer report and say the building can't be saved. I think we need to clean up the, the area.
Commissioner Rensma-Savicka?
I mean, we've issued a lot of obsolete property certificates, I think this is the most discussed one. There's some other buildings downtown that I know we did, like Lori's Leading Lady or whatever on Clay that hasn't been cleaned up. I mean, so I, I just think, you know, that this is how we normally pursue the, the, the planning process for the obsolete property certificates, so, and I, yeah, I, sorry, just say, you know, we're, I understand the focus of it, but there's, there's, you know, that's been our precedent of pursuing it that way with the timeline.
Mr. Manager?
I was gonna say, one more thing too, I don't know, Mike brought this up when he started talking about Terrace Plaza, but he hasn't brought it up here, but there is an expectation from the state when they're considering, and, you know, statewide incentives for projects like this, that cities issue local incentives, much like what we're proposing here. And so there is a chance that if, if local incentives aren't put on the table, and state incentives aren't put on the table, and it really makes a project much less, if not completely, you know, much less feasible, if not completely infeasible. But there is an expectation at the state level that the locals are doing something to, to match at some level the investment that the state's gonna put, probably put into a project like this.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'm coming on that, but just piggyback on Dan's comments, I just wanted clarification. Are you referring to the commercial rehabilitation certificate that was given to Cordell?
Yeah.
Okay. That's underway though, right? I mean, as far as I understand, he's whiteboxing it, and there's a sign for a new establishment coming soon, whereas there wasn't that sign just a few weeks ago, but I know there was a lull, but...
I, I can't tell you if he's pulled permits or not for anything beyond the demolition that I know of.
Okay. And I completely understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Turnquist, I, I'm right there on the same page with you in terms of the frustrations of that, that blight and public safety, and you've, you've heard me enough talk about that tonight. I guess where you and I differ is that with obsolete property certificate, we, we have a firm dollar amount that they're gonna be investing. We, we got a deadline. I'd like to get the clock ticking on that deadline so that we see this development happen within the next two years. The other thing is that the tax savings that they're gonna be getting from the obsolete property certificate aren't really gonna accrue until they've made those investments, because it's, it's only freezing the property taxes right now. If they don't make the sizable investments in there, property value's not gonna increase, they're not gonna see significant savings on there. Whereas the enterprise, neighborhood enterprise zone certificate, that reduces their overall millage by roughly half, and so they would see considerable savings in property taxes immediately. And that's why I'm withholding my support for the NEZ right now until I see some concrete steps taken to address that blight and public safety. But in the meantime, I'm willing to support the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate so they can continue doing their due diligence in terms of trying to access financing and get incentives from the state to move this project forward. But, and, and I, and I trust that Sarah and her team will be working with the city and the community on addressing that building before the NEZ comes to us. And we could make this a very community collaborative effort too, in which city steps up, DPW, DPS, in terms of how we can help you board up, or put wraps up, or come to other ideas. And if we board up, we could potentially get youth in our community to, to paint some murals about what they love about Muskegon on that plywood that you board up the windows, or you get some other local artists to do murals, so we have some community art on there as well, so we can make this a community collaborative effort that people feel like they have a stake in it, and that they're working. I've had several people come to me in recent weeks, like, how can I help combat that blight at Watermark? What can I do? And I think that could be a way that you could include the community on that. So I'm willing to support the obsolete property rehabilitation certificate tonight. And, and again, I, I look forward to seeing steps be put in place to address the blight and public safety concerns that I and other citizens have before I would give my countenance to the neighborhood enterprise zone certificate, so thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
I just have, can I ask Ms. Sass a clarification question?
Sure.
There's been a lot of talk about how nothing's been done to that corner building, and it was just a quick blurb last night, but if you could just clarify, I thought that I had heard some windows have been repaired, and of course, we've seen the tarp went up, I don't remember how many years ago, but could you just clarify what has been done in the meantime?
Actually, I can, I can actually show you if you want to see. Can I show you right here?
Oh, and I have that.
Yeah. You can see from the beginning, this is what it looked like when I first came aboard. This was even, looked like it was the last year. So one of the things that we've done in the past is fixed all the panes of glass in these windows, and we put up wraps on the sides too. So you can see through that, that we have done a lot. We removed these fire escapes, we actually removed another, removed another set over here too. So we have done a lot to that building.
And what year was that?
This one was, this one was in 2008. This is before and after, and this is like yesterday.
Okay. Okay, so in the last eight years yourself?
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner German?
Yeah. Question, they have a two... Yeah. Question, they have a two-year deadline, is that so, to complete the project? Right. And I know Commissioner Turnquist stated he had looked at that building for 16 years, but tried 20-some, almost 30, you know, because it's been a while. And I think it's really time that we do something down there to try to unify that area. And I would like to see the project move successfully, and the city can, you know, work with you and do all that we can. But, you know, I do believe in accountability and to meet those deadlines and if we issue the abatement, I mean, excuse me. So I'm in favor of creating the request for the issue of obsolete property certificate, and I just wish you the best and hopefully you can move forward and go through the next phase, and the city will be happy and, like I said, continue to engage with the community. I think that would be your greatest asset, you know, getting feedback from the community as well.
Anything else, commissioners? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment at this point?
I just really want to clarify again. I am not anti this project at all. I'm not. I think it's great. I think that amount of investment in our downtown is fantastic. I think making it fresh, making it new, getting excitement going around our downtown is absolutely what we need to do. But as with everything else, I agree, there needs to be some accountability with that building. And I get that little things have been done, but I just took pictures today of shards of glass right on the sidewalk, right underneath it. So to me, before you guys approve the enterprise zone, I really think you need a firm commitment that this is going to be addressed and not, "Well, we might do this," or "We have done this in the past." No, it needs to be a plan of what is going to happen. So in a decade, we are not having the same conversation. That's it.
Thank you, John. Any other members of the public that would like to make a comment at this juncture? Sir?
Tim Obdike, 296 Lake Drive, Muskegon. If you look through the document here, you'll see that it was listed on there as research and development for part of the project here with the Watermark. I've crossed paths with a lot of you guys in day-to-day life, and we kind of got thrown into this sort of on a whim. My partner and I bought a building downtown Muskegon. We had a concept. And when we started working with Sarah with some other events at the Watermark, everything just kind of made some more sense. We led into like a Watermark Live, and then we met with P&amp;G and everybody there. And, you know, Sarah's really sort of taken the rein on this, and she's taken a lot of heat for it, which I think is sort of par for the course. And I think that a lot of people are looking at, you know, definitely the timeframe of, you know, when the building was purchased and what's been done. And I do agree that, you know, things should be moving a little bit faster, and that's sort of where we came into play. My partner and I, Nick, have been working with Sarah for about three years on this project. So I know a lot of you guys are saying, "Hey, I've drove by this thing for 10, 15 years. You know, I've lived here my entire life, but I've invested a lot of time and effort in the past three and a half years that, you know, we haven't done a great job of portraying that to everybody, you know, say, 'Hey, you know, I don't walk around knocking on doors saying, "I'm working really hard on this. Please, you know, stand behind us on this.'" But, you know, we have, and we want to do the right thing, and we wanted to make sure that all the ducks are in a row and everything makes sense. So I ask that, you know, you guys please consider that, is, you know, Sarah's been doing this for a while. She's worked hard. It's been successful, and we've taken calculated risks to continue that, and we would like to still move forward with that. And I know that you do have some fresh people behind it that, you know, do intend to make things better for Muskegon and for the community, especially, you know, because we're going to rely on the community for the project as a whole as well as employment. So we really need the support of everybody just to make sure things can go as well as we hope.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak to the issue? Mr. Pash?
The simplest way to address the concerns, especially Mr. Johnson, is to start with that building. If that's the first one that's worked on, it's the priority to make sure it's saved, then I think a lot of the debate, the questions that have come up are resolved immediately because you'll see the investment in that building. You'll see a finished product or something that certainly is underway as it's developed with the rest of it, and that treasure's saved. That's the one that seems to be of the most concern of the 49 buildings that are on site. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Ron. Any other members of the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and to approve the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. Commissioner Rensselaar?
I move we close the public hearing and approve the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for 920 Washington.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaar, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to close the public hearing and approve the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. Any last comments before we take the vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaar?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business to bring before the body commissioners? If none, are there, oh, we do have, Mr. George Monroe. You have public comment. Please come forward. Just need your name and address, George, and you got three minutes.
My name is George Monroe, and I live at 925 East Dillsabella Avenue. And I just want to thank our safety director and the police departments for the reaction that we got on the 18th of June on our street. And the neighbors also want to thank each and every one that was there, and we appreciate them.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to bring anything before the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go home.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson. Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rensselaar to go home. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's right. He said something about sandwiches.